I call to order this special meeting of the Governing Board for the Scottsdale Unified School District. It is Wednesday, September 9, 2020, and the time is 5:01 PM. I will have a roll call, starting on my right.
Jan Michael Greenberg.
Sandy Kravitz.
Barbara Pellerberg.
Patty Beckman.
And Allison Beckham. All five Governing Board members are present, and we have a quorum. All rise, and Vice President Beckman will say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to approving the agenda. Do I have any changes to the agenda? All right. I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Vice President Beckman approves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We'll move on to our information and discussion items. Discussion item A, a review and discussion results of parent and staff surveys. Dr. Menzel, would you please begin the discussion?
I will. Thank you, President Beckman, Vice President Beckham, and members of the Governing Board. Appreciate your willingness to gather again this evening to review the results of the parent survey that we sent out, as well as the staff survey and recommendations from the administration for next steps. I want to start by just providing some basic information with respect to the parent survey responses that we received and how the process unfolded. And before I do that, I want to thank Dr. Bachner and her team for all their assistance in putting this together and analyzing the data so that we could have this conversation this evening. So the survey was open from 12:30 in the afternoon on September 3 through 3:00 PM on September 7. That was Labor Day. Parents were able to enter responses for each student in their family, so it was not one response for family, but they could customize based on individual needs of students. If a response was submitted for a student more than once, the last submitted response was the one that was counted. And then, all responses were verified to be active K-12 students within the Scottsdale Unified School System. And finally, and we've had people ask about this, submissions for inactive preschool or Scottsdale Online learning were not included in the analysis presented here. So I had indicated previously that we had more than 16,000 responses, but when we accounted for those other variables, those other inactive preschool, Scottsdale Online, or duplicates, the total number of responses was around 12,000. And we'll talk about what percent of the total that represents. Community Education conducted its own survey of pre-K and preschool parents separately. And in that survey, just for your information, I believe it's 78% of the respondents wanted to return to in-person preschool. So as a reminder, we asked two survey questions. And while there were criticisms on the survey, I think there always will be, and there's not likely ever to be a perfect survey, there were very specific reasons why we asked these two questions. The first question is, I am prepared to return to full-time in-person learning at my home school. And there were four options. Now, when the metrics are green for two consecutive weeks, when there's a vaccine, and at the end of the year. As you know, the end-of-the-year conversation was one that was confusing for some people because they didn't know if it meant the end of the calendar year or the end of the school year. And in the Spanish version, it said at the end of the school year. So it did lead to some confusion. But if we step back and ask, what was the information we were trying to glean from this information? It was essentially the risk tolerance of our parents. So those who want to come now have a different level of risk tolerance than those who want to wait for a vaccine, for example. And so that was what we were trying to gather from this information. And you'll see where our community landed in the survey responses. The second question really got to how parents feel about the learning options that they would like going forward. The first option was continue an EDL until the metrics are green for two consecutive weeks. The second was a chance to weigh in on the hybrid that was presented on September 1. And the third was a phased-in full return, beginning with K-2, then adding 3.5, and then moving to middle school and high school. Before we get into the results of the survey, I just want to share a little bit in terms of the overall response rate. And you can see, by building, we have ranging anywhere from 30% to over 82% in one case. So we had a very solid response from our families, but we did have a lower response rate from Coronado High School and some of the Coronado Complex. The overall response rate represents 66% of our families. As surveys go, that's generally a pretty good number, although we would have liked to have had higher percentages in a few of our buildings. Overall, we had a very solid response rate. So, the overall results, with respect to the first question, I am prepared to return now, 50%. When the benchmarks are met and we're in green for two weeks, 35%. When there's a vaccine, 7%. And EDL the rest of the year, 8%. So, from my perspective, one, it validates what we have been hearing, and that is, our community is divided. They have different opinions about what they're prepared to do next. When we ask about the learning model selection, that breakdown is a little bit different. 42% indicated full return. Another 34% said continue an EDL until the metrics are in green for two consecutive weeks. 25% indicated that they liked the hybrid model. We can further analyze that by grade level, because that's a little bit different. And when we get to the elementary grades, 53% of the parents are ready for a return now, compared to 33% that want to wait until the benchmarks are met and in green for two weeks. And then you can see the spread on vaccine and EDL for the rest of the year. At the elementary level, 45% were indicating full return, 36% continuing in the EDL model until the benchmark metrics are met, and then 19% favored the hybrid. At the middle school level, 50% indicated they're ready to return now, and then the other 50% want to wait a little bit longer. On the learning model selection, it shifts just a little bit, with 40% ready for full return, 34% continuing in EDL, and 25% expressing desire for the hybrid. And the high school is where the numbers shift a little bit more. Only 47% were ready to return now. So that's the first time we've been under 50% on the return now. And then at the learning model selection, 37% wanted full return, 32% expressed a preference for the hybrid, and 31% continuing in EDL until the metrics are met. So this one, in terms of the learning preference, is different than the other two, because the hybrid actually, by one percentage point, was favored over the continuing EDL model. And if you're going to make an assumption about this or an interpretation, is that some form of in-person at the high school level is preferred to no in-person at the high school level, because that's what you get when you're making that selection here. So just some general conclusions before we move on to the staff survey and then the recommendations. And I'm really looking forward to the conversation with the board. But first, when you look at the overall data, you'll remember on September 1, the question was asked, well, what's the threshold for saying yes to implementing a hybrid or one of the options? And we said, if 80% of the families say that they want hybrid, that's a threshold we could implement. But if it's 20%, I think those were just the numbers we used at that meeting, we really couldn't stand up a hybrid for 20%. The data that we have here shows, in aggregate, 25% preferred the hybrid that was presented on September 1. There's not enough interest in our community, in terms of our parent interest, to move forward with the hybrid as proposed on 9-1. That's also validated in the staff survey. A lot of questions and concerns about how that model would be implemented. Secondly, our community is split equally between returning now and waiting. And one of the reasons why we wanted to conduct the survey is that we have heard from people on both sides indicating they represent the silent majority, and that the vast majority of people want to return right now. Well, it's not 80% that want to return right now, it's 50%. And so that was important information for us to gather in order to make a recommendation for the board. And with that, given the level of readiness to return, a new potential solution for next steps actually surfaces. So it's not bad news that our community is split. It actually opens up a new possibility for how we can proceed. Before I get to that, I want to talk just briefly about the staff survey. So we also wanted to hear from our employees, and we sent out an open-ended, five-question survey. And the challenge with doing an open-ended, five-question survey is it takes a lot longer to analyze the data. We had a 45% response rate with 1,365 staff members. I know the numbers per building are probably hard to read, but the point is that we had a good representation from across the district in terms of staff who completed the survey. Broad themes that I think are important to highlight here are that we did see a recurring theme around safety and health protocols. A lot of concerns about, if we're coming back, what kinds of things will be enforced, concerns about mask wearing, cleaning protocols, personal protective equipment, compliance with those expectations, compliance with the metrics, knowing that we're actually following the science as we move forward in terms of what we implement. Those concerns were raised loud and clear. There were a number of concerns about the hybrid, specifically the logistics of how you do it, and concerns if we were going to be asking our teachers to both provide in-person instruction and online at the same time. And we actually think that that's a legitimate concern, and in our proposal, we'll be suggesting not doing that. And then, our teachers and our classified staff and our administrators, much like our community, are split about when they think we should return. So there are people who indicated in the survey, wait until the metrics are all green. Some said until there's a vaccine or the end of the calendar year. Others are saying, we really need to be back now. Our kids need to be back now. It's important for them. And they listed the reasons. So it's not surprising to me that our staff feedback is similar to what we saw in the parent survey. Then I wanted to just do a quick reminder of what the benchmark indicators are and suggest a way of thinking about next steps that I think can help move us forward as a district. As you recall, on August 18, a motion was made and supported and approved for one, that the district adopt the Arizona Department of Health Services Benchmark Criteria. The benchmarks are listed here at the bottom of this screen. We're familiar with the red, yellow, and green. The three benchmarks are cases, so the number of cases per 100,000, the percent positivity in COVID-like illness. In the red, if we have more than 100 cases per 100,000, that puts us in the red. The recommendation is for all virtual. If you have even one thing in the red, the recommendation is for all virtual. Greater than 10% positivity, greater than 10% COVID-like illness. The yellow, which is where we are now, has a range for cases from 10 to 100, a range of positivity from 5 to 10%, and a range of COVID-like illness from 5 to 10%. There was language in the recommendation from ADHS that to move from red to yellow, your percent positivity had to be under 7% for two consecutive weeks. And you can stay in yellow, it can vary over time up to the 10%, but to move from red to yellow, it needed to be below 7% for two consecutive weeks. And that is a benchmark that has been met. And as you know, we've been in the yellow now for a couple of weeks. The third area, the green, that's the area where they recommend full return, has less than 10 cases per 100,000, less than 5% positivity rate, and less than COVID-like illness. As you know, in the data that we provided from last week, in Scottsdale Unified School District with our 15 ZIP codes, the aggregate data indicates that we've met green in two of the three, but we have not met it for the number of cases, less than 10 per 100,000. So, this is what the board adopted and approved. The motion didn't say that we are going to approve the entire set of guidelines or criteria that are in the safely returning to in-school instruction, because there are many suggestions in here. But we didn't say that we are adopting the entire plan. We said we are adopting the criteria. So that's just, I think, an important point to put on the table. I also want to let you know that I had a conversation this afternoon with Dr. Sunnenschein from the Maricopa County Department of Public Health. And I, earlier, had asked an email question about whether or not there was any chance that the number of cases per 100,000 was going to be changed by public health officials. And she indicated that number is not likely to change. It is a national standard that's been established, and so very unlikely that that metric would change. She also said that based on her professional judgment, it is unlikely that we will achieve that number prior to having a vaccine. There's no guarantee, and she did qualify it. She said it's unlikely, but not impossible, that we would get to less than 10 per 100,000 before there's a vaccine. There are a number of other things that we talked about that I can share later, but I wanted to just put that up as a reminder before we get to our recommendation. So given the feedback from our families, and given the benchmark metrics that we're operating in, which provide an opportunity for us to return to learn in person in a hybrid, and this again was confirmed by Dr. Sunnenschein, hybrid was not defined by ADHS, with the exception of saying, some of the students are online and some are in person. And it does not provide more specificity than that, because it gives local districts the ability to decide how they're going to proceed. We also were required and do have a plan to address the mitigation strategies that are necessary. That was a prerequisite for moving forward. That's on our website and is also being updated. So our recommendation, given the information that we have in front of us now, would be to implement a phased-in return-to-learn in person using the following schedule. First, we're already moving forward on Monday of next week, returning special education students in special programs and preschool on that Monday. We had authorization under a separate executive order to address the learning needs of students with IAPs. Right now, there are about 42% of the families signed up, even though 75% they wanted to come in person. And so we're working on that to make sure that we're connecting with all the families. And as I mentioned earlier, 78% of the preschool families indicated they're ready to return in person as well. Then we would recommend, on the week of September 21, that we bring back our K-2 student population. That is designed to address the needs of our youngest learners, who we know, when we look at online learning and developmentally where they are and what's most appropriate for them, they really need to be back in school. Then it says September 29, and not the 28, because I was reminded today that the 28th is not a school day. We're off that day. So the 29th, in a four-day week, we would bring back our 3rd through 5th graders that had made the option to return to learn in person. Then we have our fall break. And after fall break, we would propose to bring back middle school and high school students. I want to actually give a note of thanks to the Hybrid Committee. They did a lot of work. And while the 9-1 recommendation and the iterations of those hybrids haven't been approved and aren't likely moving forward, they actually did help us come up with this phased-in approach that actually is really useful, given the data we have from our community. So I want to thank them for the time and energy that they put into this. Also acknowledge that there's still more work to do, depending on how the board acts tonight. So based on the data, it appears as though we actually have a natural hybrid. Now, hybrid is going to be a word that people get really confused by, but what we're authorized to do by following the metrics that are in place is implement a hybrid. But what we're proposing is not two days on and three days off. We're proposing to say, we have half of our families ready to come back now, and we can actually get close to, approximate, the kind of hybrid that we were trying to get before we knew where our parents would land. And that means that you have fewer students coming on campus every day. And then we can slowly work our way into this. When I talked to Dr. Sunnenschein, and I outlined what I was going to share with you this evening, she actually said, and she said, I can quote her, because I wrote it down, she said, "I think it's genius." And she noted in particular that by starting with the youngest and most vulnerable students at home, we are following the model set by maybe Denmark. And she also said she loves it because it gives parents choice. And she knows that many districts are struggling with the very same question, and she acknowledged that she doesn't envy the position that we're in this evening. So the second piece is that we need to now go back. We asked parents, if given a choice, where would you be? If the board adopts our recommendations tonight, we have to go back and solidify that commitment for two reasons. One, some people selected hybrid, and that's not an option that's being provided. And we need to know if the hybrid families are going to choose to participate in enhanced distance learning extended. Can I get that right, Dr. Garen? Or if they're going to participate in full return, because that's going to impact how we approach staffing. We believe that it's absolutely essential that when the decision is made, that it's a decision that's made through December 18, or the end of the semester. We are going to have to be making some modifications to staffing. Even in the survey, we had qualified that there may be some teaching adjustments as a result of being able to implement this. And if we go forward with the recommendation, everybody's going to sacrifice a little something. Not everybody's going to get everything they want, but more kids are going to get what they need. And so if we can understand that we're not getting 100% solution for anyone, but we're going to provide the best possible educational options for Scottsdale students, I think that we should be able to move forward in a constructive way. And I would add that while the recommendation was formulated before my conversation with Dr. Sunnenschein, the fact that she believes that we won't get to that third green metric until there's a vaccine, and while there's some talk about it being available this fall, it might be more realistic that it's at the beginning of next year, we might be looking at that time period anyway. Then the third recommendation is that we actually continue to use the Arizona Department Health Services Benchmark Metrics, because the metrics themselves provide a very nice and defensible guideline for how we're proceeding with implementing our return-to-learn-in-person plan. And if we were to make any deviation from that, we would have to either justify on what basis or always be subject to the criticism, well, if you could change this one, why don't you change that one? And we said from the very beginning that we're not the epidemiologists. We are not public health officials. And so deviating from those guidelines, in my estimation, would open us up to all sorts of potential challenges, questions, and scrutiny that I don't believe is necessary, because I think that given where we are now, we can proceed to implement a plan that is responsive to what our community said they want, follows the science, maybe imprecise at times, substantial compliance with the recommendations, but you can't guarantee, and couldn't guarantee, even in the hybrid that was proposed, that you would always have six feet of physical separation. Kids are kids. And so, our recommendation is that we follow those, that we work to do the very best we can to implement. can to implement all of the mitigation strategies that have been outlined in our plan and those that we'll continue to pursue with respect to testing in order to ensure the health, safety, and well-being of our staff and students, and move forward on a plan to navigate this pandemic together as a community. I'm happy to answer questions that you have.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel. Board members, who would like to begin with either a question, discussion, comment?
I'll start.
Thank you. Board Member Kravitz.
I just wanted to know, how was the survey publicized? Because there is, while HOHOCOM had a good response rate of 58%, some of the other schools in the Coronado learning community did not have as a robust response rate.
So it was sent by email to all families, and then we sent a follow-up text. And what we saw was a, a big jump in the number of responses after we sent the follow-up text. What I don't recall is if the principals sent out any other communication to their families. They had that option, but I don't know if they did in any of the specific complexes or not.
Were any of the communications, they were sent out in Spanish as well as in English?
That's my, that's my understanding. I know the survey was in Spanish.
Okay.
And I would have to, okay, thank you.
But I wasn't sure about the communications.
Was the communication also sent in Spanish? Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so then, I thank you for this presentation, and I'm glad to see that it shook out the way I thought it was going to. But anyway, one of the greatest criticisms that our constituents have voiced throughout my time in Scottsdale Unified School District is that they, they become frustrated at what appears to be a slow-moving district. And I often say to them, the district is like an aircraft carrier. We're not a Chris-Craft boat. However, I do think that there are places where we can improve. And so one of the things with this implemented phased-in return that I would like to see if we can implement is rather than just phasing in K2 on September 21st, well, it would be great if we could phase it in on the 14th, but barring that, we have different buildings, so why can't we phase in, you know, K2 on the 21st? We have middle schools, sixth grade as well on the 21st, and maybe ninth or 10th grade also on the 21st, because these are all separate buildings. So it would be more accelerated. We'd get students back on our campuses, which is what some of the people who have responded have said they wanted, and they are willing to accept that risk. I know originally you had said, "We'll phase in, and we'll see each two weeks," and because we don't want, we want to try to mitigate any kind of spread. But our parents are telling, for those that are choosing to return to campus, that they want to be there. And I don't, I don't think it serves our students to have some go back on October 12th when we are hearing from middle and high school families that their children are floundering.
So there, there was a reason. It was considered. We had the conversation about could we do sixth grade and ninth grade and kind of phase in at that level? There are multiple challenges. One, our teachers at the middle school and high school don't just teach one grade level. It's not like a first-grade teacher. And so you could have a sixth-grade teacher who's teaching sections of sixth grade and seventh grade. You can have, you have elective teachers that may be covering sixth, seventh, and eighth. They, same in the high school. And so it's not like you have a neat division of which teachers are going to be in, in a particular place at a particular time. And we heard very loud and clear from our middle school and high school principals that, that really, in order to be able to manage the transition in this environment, it makes sense to do it at the quarter break. That, that all of the logistics, and this is what I think a lot of our community members don't understand, there, there are so many moving parts and pieces with a middle school and a high school schedule. When you have 2,200 or 2,400 students at a, at a high school, that's a complex scheduling challenge. And if you're going to move and say, some of those are going to be in enhanced distance learning, and some of those are going to be on campus, the structure for how that looks is, is much more complicated than what we're looking at at the elementary. So it's going to take more time in order to put that in motion and finalize those pieces in order to meet the needs of both the students that choose to stay in enhanced distance learning and those who choose full return. So it's, it's both a product of, you don't have the neat division of, of staffing to be able to do it, and logistically, there's a challenge, and we've got a, a transition point. So the week of the 28th, that's typically a testing week. So we're, we're really, when you think about where we are, there are 16 days until the end of the first quarter. So we're actually, it, it may, in some respects, feel like we want to return tomorrow, but in order to do it right, that's part of it. The other part that I think is important is as we watch how this plays out, we want to make sure that when we open, we stay open. We do not want to have to shut down quickly. The, the research, while it's still emerging, and so the research today might be different tomorrow, less risk at the elementary in terms of how the kids both get and spread compared to students that are older than 10. And so as we continue to learn our way forward, we are watching and monitoring what other districts that have opened and done full return, what their experiences are so that we can learn from those, because we want to make sure we're implementing all of the appropriate mitigation strategies to ensure it's a safe environment. So we've got a lot of different reasons for why this phased-in approach is the one that we landed on, but we did actually spend time considering sixth grade and ninth grade as a, as a step in at those levels. It just, from a practical standpoint, became very difficult. And we have a, a standard of quality that we expect in Scottsdale, and I don't believe that we could meet that if we were going to try to parse it out that way.
Okay, so I have another idea. What about starting at the middle and high school level with, since it is a mixture of grades that take classes or subjects? What about starting with math and science? Because those are, from what I'm hearing, typically more difficult to teach online than English and social studies. Again, just trying to get kids in the, like, that we're, we're trying.
I do, I do understand that the challenge then becomes transportation. What part of their, if they're going to do two classes online, are they coming for two hours a day? And how are you managing the transportation when you're also trying to do that when you stand up K2 and 3-5? It's, it's all the dominos that come along with that that make it very challenging to implement. Not that it's a bad idea, and I still think that what we had mentioned on September 1st holds, that we can be looking at other ways to address the needs for kids to connect with their clubs and athletics, which practices have started, some of those things. So that, that can still be in, in place. The learning labs will be open as we're making the transition. But, and, and I would invite my assistant superintendents, if they have additional things to share here, especially Dr. Sakos, from our middle school and high school perspective. That's, that's just the, the big challenge as we, as we take the next steps.
Okay, here's another idea that just popped in my head. So what about having drop-in hours for those students that are ready to, to return back to high school so that maybe they can get some assistance from their teacher that's not just online?
I'm going to turn this one over to Dr. Sakos.
That's an interesting one. Well, while she's walking up to the podium, I'm, I'm going to add a little on that, and I know we had discussed this privately at one point. But the idea of not just drop in maybe for help, that's a great idea too, but there's always that question, especially middle school, high school level, of testing and it being accurate and, and authentic. And I, I know, you know, I've heard some questions of, boy, it'd be sure nice to at least get our kids in and take some assessments before the end of the first quarter as well. So I'll kind of tack that on to that question.
Okay, so Board Member Kravitz, members of the board, just, I do concur with Dr. Menzel that with the high school brings a lot of complexity with the different scheduling, so it'd be very difficult to pick a couple of courses, because again, your student may have first-period math and sixth-period science. And so how do they get to and from those classes? And then, again, we're really trying to stay true to keeping cohorts as much as possible, especially until we get into that, that green. So that is the first thing. The second thing is with the drop-in labs. We currently have drop-in labs through community education with at Suaro and Coronado. Unfortunately, it is not maximized to the extent possible from our students. We see, you know, I think at best, maybe at Coronado, I was less than 20, and Dr. Garen can, can correct me, but we see very few numbers dropping into those labs. It is certainly something to consider at our other campuses. I know students going to and from EBIT had dropped into their home campus at times when they're waiting for the bus, and principals have naturally just accommodated them, "Come on in, go ahead and have a seat," and adhere to the safety guidelines. But that does, again, that has not been utilized like we would hope from our middle and high school students.
Okay, let me clarify what I mean by drop-in lab.
For a recent.
Oh, sorry.
Board Member Kravitz.
Sorry, President Beckham, I apologize. But by drop-in lab, I don't mean currently just computer labs. I mean having teachers, some are, if I understand correctly, working out of their classrooms, but having, maybe I should call it office hours, like in college, where students can go in and see their teacher. I mean, if, if we can't get them back on campus for a full class, perhaps our teachers can offer office hours, and if possible, they, and students can make appointments with their teacher to see them. So they're not, because some students, you know, we, we've heard from parents who want to, those, from those that want to send their kids back that feel strongly that some of their, their kids are floundering.
So the current high school schedule does allow for office hours in the afternoon as well as intervention and enrichment. It does take student or, and/or parent initiative to outreach to the teacher. Currently, that does happen virtually. That's not to say we couldn't consider it happening in a, in a physical manner as we continue to roll out opening our schools, and that certainly, certainly we can, we can talk about.
Okay, and I understand it may not be the teacher they currently have as we figure out the nuts and bolts of the system, but to at least offer a teacher, or some people just do better in person than virtually. So thank you.
You're welcome.
So what I'm hearing is, and I, and I, I think it's actually a really kind of innovative idea, is it is kind of an office hour or a special tutoring for maybe our core subjects, because we will be having our schools open. It would, there would be safety protocol there would be. It's very limited in the, in whose meeting. I guess it would be talking to the teacher, because you're, you're going to be six feet apart, so. But in person, maybe, maybe that's helpful with a whiteboard. So I actually think that's a very innovative idea that I do support looking into. And it would be by appointment then.
And Board Member Perlerberg, I'm sorry, what was your question?
It was regarding assessments, testing. Dr. Menzel mentioned even a few days of testing, and I just know that, you know, we've had a, a lot of questions even raised by teachers going, you know, how do I make sure these tests are authentic, their work? How am I truly assessing what my student knows well? And I guess I was just crossing my fingers, hoping that there might be opportunities for our middle school and high schoolers to come in and, and connect with their teachers and possibly receive assessments that our, our teachers can have confidence in prior to fall break. That was just a question.
Oh, okay. Is there a response to that? Is that a?
So we began having the assessment conversation back in quarter four, and rather than a, a typical one of multiple choice, fill in the blank, we were asking teachers to really give assessments that were more alternative and authentic, in which shows students processing through the content, you know, versus just trying to figure out what is the right answer and, and cheating that way. So personally, with two daughters in high school, I've seen some authentic ways in which teachers are assessing, and I also see the teachers, you know, encouraging to do their best, and that there's opportunities for, for test corrections, which is part of our guiding, our grading practices from several years back. And so I think that part of the approach from our teachers is encouraging students that, hey, it's okay to make mistakes. You, we're not going to, you know, you're not going to, you know, fail the class because of this, but we moreover want you to understand where your gaps are, and then we're going to work through the problems together and then give you an opportunity for, again, point, you know, additions to, to the assessment. So it's not perfect. There are still several concerns, I know, at the secondary level, and it, once we can get back to taking in exams within the, within the classroom, then I think that that's going to be the time where everybody feels much better about it really being a true assessment.
Board Member Beckman, did you have a comment or question on assessments? Because I'd like to stay on that subject before we leave it.
It's along the same vein. Not assessment, but that, kind of what Board Member Kravitz was saying. You know, our teachers are obviously working very, very hard, but similar to what you were saying about office hours, I would like to see us be a little bit more proactive during this time to assess those gaps in learning that have developed. Similar to what you're saying, instead of necessarily being optional, I would really like some of our, which they already do, I understand, but as we're easing back in, maybe some of those kids that are falling behind that are very, it's very evident, you know, the teachers obviously know, inviting them in, encouraging them in to come in to see where they are as far as, you know, the gaps in learning that have taken place to get them kind of hurt back on track. So similar to what you're saying, not necessarily for someone that maybe is identified, well, offering that child that wants to come in, but also, we can start early now, kind of one-on-one, bringing some of these kids in, offering some extra support levels and et cetera.
And I did pass the other mic to Dr. Garen to talk about gap analysis, and something that Teaching and Learning has been working on, because there's a systematic approach to how we're going to do that K-12.
So I would like to bring up one thing before we move on to, Dr. Garen, thank you. I just want to point out another comment that I've been hearing from parents, and one of the, and regarding assessments. One of the areas that they are concerned about with a hybrid model is that if they are coming back, and granted, this is now a new recommendation of coming back full, full-time, so that they would be able to, but if, for some reason, it, it comes back that they're there for a shorter period of time, and that they then do have class outside virtually, that the assessments are still virtual, because the last thing that some parents want is to have, when they're in the classroom, being assessed, because they want that time spent on instruction. So I just want to bring up, there is another viewpoint out there, that they want the instruction and the learning going on instead of just sitting at a desk taking an assessment during that learning time, and that's very important to some parents. I totally agree with what you just said. That's a great point to bring up, because we know, and this is maybe where you're going to be going, Dr. Garen, we just took assessments to find out those gaps. And that is hopefully something we will be talking at our, our next board meeting. But being proactive, I think, goes to the fact of what you're speaking about when you talked about sometimes, that it can seem that we are slow to react. And so I'm excited to hear how we're going to be addressing that so that we are proactive, not waiting for the students, because they may not understand the gap. So we need to be communicating to them what they are. So looking forward to what you have to offer.
Absolutely. President Beckham, governing board members, Dr. Menzel, and cabinet virtual guests. We've been working on a gap analysis plan since the summer. We understood with quarter four that there were potentially some standards that students missed, that it wasn't that direct best instruction face-to-face in front of the teacher with the student. So this is something we've been wrestling with all summer, and we took our usual benchmark plan, our tests that we typically give, and we rethought them. We pulled some of them and instead replaced them with assessments that were either through School City. There, there were several different structures and resources that we used to pull assessments to determine what did students miss from the year before, and could we look for trends? And then what were we going to do about it, of course, because we don't just test to test. So this fall, we have given gap analysis K-12 in ELA in math in every grade, and in many grades, science. And those results are being compiled by CIMAR and the buildings. The principals have been absolutely fantastic working with the teachers on this, finding creative ways to give assessments virtually. I was particularly impressed with kindergarten teachers. They scheduled time one-on-one and virtually gave those dibbles, all of those assessments that you give with letter naming and let fluency. It was also a way to get to know the student, because it was one-on-one even though it was virtual. So we gathered all that data, and next week is a half-day professional development day, and teachers will be meeting in professional learning communities, and they, we are taking them in the Teaching and Learning Department with CIMAR through an exercise to look for the gaps, make determinations on what needs to be covered in a more in-depth way. The other thing we did all summer, and I have to give a ton of credit to our instructional coaches, they're fantastic, we looked at our curriculum maps. an exercise to look for the gaps, make determinations on what needs to be covered in a more in-depth way. The other thing we did all summer, and I have to give a ton of credit to our instructional coaches, they're fantastic, we looked at our curriculum maps and chose essential standards. Instead of just touching on everything, we picked essential standards that we're going to go deep on. So these are all the upgrades that you see with enhanced distance learning, separate from quarter four, because we actually had a couple months to prepare. So, once that professional development day is finished, I would be happy to come back and share that data with you. It's going to drive our instruction and we're going to be responsive as a school district, because we'll be able to look for patterns.
Thank you very much. I would like to add, because I know this is not part of the agenda in the discussion, but that to, when you do come back to share with us, that you talk about how that has been communicated to the family, the parents. Thank you. Any other comment on that before Dr. Garen leaves, since it's not? Okay. All right. So we can continue on the discussion. Vice President Beckman.
Just a quick, make sure that we have clarity. So, this natural hybrid that is developing, because it seems 50% of our families would like to return now per the survey, you know, I spoke with you, you know, this isn't going to perfectly match up, right, in the classroom. You're not going to have, if there's 30 kids in the class of third graders, you're not going to have 15 just magically show up and 15, we may have some classes that all 30 show up that day, or for full return, and eight show up in another classroom. So, you are that, thus the teacher, kind of discussion and pointed out in the survey that we are going to have to, staffing is one of the most significant challenges in this. And so, you will be potentially moving teachers and, or moving children around. Can you talk to that, about that a little bit?
So, yes, you're, you're correct, because while in the aggregate, the numbers work really well, the numbers do vary by building. And when we actually have parents make a commitment, because we got their preference at this point, but then we take the next step and say, okay, if you chose hybrid, are you going to move to full return, or are you going to stay in EDL? Once we have those numbers, then we can take the next step in terms of what, what shifts are minimally disruptive, but allow us to be able to provide enhanced distance learning that meets the quality of this quarter and doesn't revert to quarter four, while also being able to provide for our students who are coming back in person. That's not an easy challenge. It's another reason why phasing in is really helpful, because we'll see what works well, we'll see what can be improved at each step along the process, and, and we'll work on the balancing. And quite frankly, what we have to do as a district is look at all of our available resources. So as we think about how staff are currently assigned, not only for those who are in EDL full return, but also in Scottsdale Online, figuring out, are there other ways that we can deploy our, our staff and our talent in order to meet the needs of our students in the most efficient, efficient way possible? That's why we have to also then get a commitment to say, we're going to follow that through to the end of the semester. Because we don't want to have multiple disruptions going forward, we want to be able to do this, see it through to the end of the semester. And I'm, I hope, I can't guarantee anything, but I would really like to be on the other side of, of where we are with COVID now. There's a vaccine if we're in green, so that semester two, we're having a very different conversation about how we're educating students. But that's, that's the plan, is to, we have to see the numbers before then we can figure out how that, how that process works. I know that Dr. Hagigot, Dr. Garen have been talking with the elementary principals in some of the buildings where we have smaller numbers. It's, if you had 40 kids who wanted to come in person and 20 that, that were EDL, and you only have two second grade teachers, that's not a problem that we can solve within that building. But we might be able to solve it within the learning complex. And so, thinking about how we work across the district to meet the needs of our students that way is part of what they're working on at the present time.
Thank you.
Board member Greenberg.
Thank you. If I may follow up on that, just so my colleagues are aware, the natural hybrid model, the balances are significantly off, because we do have certain schools where 70% of people want to return now. So, it's, it will take a lot of time and it could end up being very different looking than what we have before. And it could also mean that it isn't, it isn't really a hybrid model necessarily insofar as a teacher might have a full class, correct? I mean, I mean, we only have so many teachers, so if we need teachers teaching EDL and teaching in-person, it might not be a hybrid insofar as a teacher is in a classroom with just half of what their usual class size might be.
So, so the, the teacher-student ratio is something that will vary, and we'll need to figure out the parameters. I had the conversation earlier this evening with SEA representatives in terms of how that might look. And until we see how the numbers fall out, it would be premature for me to say what that would look like. But there has to be some variability based on the numbers that show up in any particular building. And you have the opportunity within EDL to think a little bit differently about ratios, because you're not in the physical space. And so we have to have that conversation as well. We've not had that discussion in terms of making a specific recommendation on what those ratios should be in this model, because we don't have approval from the board to implement this model.
What, what would you anticipate, just because I want to be very clear about what the possible outcomes of this are for our families who, who can expect a potential change in teacher, or even, maybe even a site, I really don't know, or, and our staff, is that we're going to design a ratio? How do you see it? I mean, is it, do you think we're going to design a ratio that we think limits the number of students and staff in a single classroom? Or are we going to just try and fill, fill it however it works?
Well, I, I think part of it, and I don't know if Dr. Garen has some ideas from EDL Extended Thinking, but that committee is meeting Thursday, which is tomorrow, I think. The, so some of those specifics we may be working on. But I would, I would step back a little bit and say, when I look at the numbers per building and by grade level, we've got a lot of 31%, 25%, 20% said full return, depending on the building. If you add in half of the hybrid, because we don't know how many hybrid are going to choose that, versus saying, I'm happier with staying in enhanced distance learning through the end of the year. It, it's a little speculative to know how that would play out. But you're going to have somewhere between 50%, in some cases, it'll be less than 50% of the student population that had been in that building before, in the building now. You might have 60 or 65% in some, but that's still, those numbers are of the 85% that are in EDL, because we've got 15% of our student population already in Scottsdale Online, so they won't be in the building. So in the building itself, you, you really do approximate the hybrid intentionality. What happens in individual classrooms, that's what has to be addressed at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And that's part of the work of EDL Extended and, you know, implementing this plan if it's adopted.
Dr. Garen.
I absolutely think you covered it all, Dr. Menzel. So, and yes, we are meeting tomorrow as a committee, and we have to talk about middle school and high school, because the complexity really is there. Elementary is tough too, but there's give and takes to all of these models. And what we heard about the hybrid model is that was not enough in-person time for the first, the first plan, right? Because there was asynchronous days. The second plan was more balanced, but then again, it was much less time in the building. The beauty of this plan is, it is five days a week full return with less students, anticipated less students. So, you get more time in the building, of course.
Thank you.
So, I, before you leave, Dr. Garen, I have a quick question on that. So what will be the process to discover the commitment from our families? Are we going to actually have a hard registration, or what is that process?
So, Dr. Hagigot has been taking the lead on that. So if-
Dr. Hagigot, do you want to talk about the process and the commitment? She's been working night and day with her principals.
Good evening and thank you. Yes, we do have a process. We are sending out a letter, the principals will be sending out a letter with a link that is a final commitment form that has the two choices that you're hearing about today. And so this should be going out tomorrow. We're hoping if this is approved by you today, that hopefully about noon, between noon and 2 o'clock, our principals will be able to send this out and get it per school. They will have that Google form, they will get the results. Dr. Menzel, myself, Dr. Sakos, and Dr. Garen are collaborators, so that way they know right away what they're dealing with and they can start making plans around the next steps. And so we know that it's a quick turnaround from the decision, so we wanted to have the different options and the different letters and the different forms ready to go, so that tomorrow we have an all-admin meeting and we're able to deliver this message to all principals, all administrators, and then we're able to take next steps right away.
Do you want to continue? Do you want to continue on that?
Well, I just wanted to ask, because how are the principals, since you've talked with them all, feeling about this new hybrid?
You know, there's mixed emotions out there, because there's just a lot of different pieces that they have to deal with, with their teachers, and the staffing is going to be a big challenge, because we have to do another shift to make sure that we are addressing all of the needs of all of the different pieces that we're proposing here. And so, they're optimistic in the sense that they know that we're here to serve students, they're professional, and they will roll up their sleeves and do what we need to do. But just like many of us here, there's just long hours and many things that we need to do in order to get this going, in whatever direction is decided. We know that what we have right now is not ideal, it's not the optimal learning that we expect out of every single one of our students. We are doing our absolute best to deliver those services, but we also know that in some cases, including our special education, they need to be with us, they need that support, as well as our little ones, our K-1, too, they need that support as well. So I know that our principals are going to be able to help us through any of whatever decision is made here, but it is tiresome, and I just want to give them a shout out and just a lot of kudos, because everything that they've been through since May, being the leaders that they know how to be, I can't be any prouder of our entire pre-K-12 administration.
Thank you for that. I guess my question was going more towards, are the principals supportive of this new model? In that they feel it is, I'll define it, they feel it is best for the students?
Again, super loaded question. Yes, supported in the sense that they are professionals, but they too have their own individual thoughts of what could work better. But because we are a unified district, I know that they will get behind what we're doing right now, as long as they get the support that they need from us with their staffing. It's hard for any principal to have to shift their staff again, and it's hard for students, and they see that, to have to make that change again. But I know that we'll get the support that we need based on the decision that is made here.
Thank you. And board member Greenberg, thank you for letting me ask a question.
I appreciate that. I, I, there are a couple things. My assumption is, based on the first question, which was the only question not complained about as confusing or misleading, or should I choose strategically hybrid in case you don't reopen for full in-person, all, all that? My assumption is, if 70% of families in a, in a grade at a school want their child to be there for full in-person, if we give them the opportunity to decide between continuing EDL or returning to in-person through this natural hybrid, it isn't necessarily, it, it might not shake out for all staff members in all classes to be a hybrid in the sense that you might think of it. You know, for, for, just as an example, right, Copper Ridge, eighth grade, nearly 70% of parents want their children to be back in school full in-person. I'm going to assume that, and that might be a mistake, but I'm going to assume that if we give them the option, return in-person or remain on EDL, they are going to choose to, to go in-person. There are factors that might change that. For example, parents might say, well, if, if the risk is I'm going to lose my, my teacher, you know, I might switch and I might maintain EDL, so we might lose some or we might gain some. But I'm not sure that's a totally unfair assumption, and I, and I'm just painting that not to shoot this idea down. I'm not opposed to rolling this out, but I just want to be very clear that the, the hybrid model, we have lost, we've lost, we've, some, 15% of our families, 14% have gone to SOL, and we have moved some staff there to handle SOL. So there's a little bit of a staff loss, not much, but a little bit of a staff loss there. And it seems like our staff is split, although, did we ever ask our staff, yes or no, are you willing to return to in-person learning before meeting the green metrics? Is there a reason why we didn't ask that question?
We already did.
Because when we asked the question before the assignment related to Scottsdale Online, where we prioritize, if you've got a health condition or have a family member with a health condition, we gave them the opportunity to have first choice to be in an online environment so that they wouldn't have that issue. And, and we had spots that were still available for others who wanted to be in Scottsdale Online. So our belief was that the other teachers were prepared to return when we were prepared to return, that remained in EDL full return. Now, there are some who have expressed concern, some doubt, they want to wait longer, but at the end of the day, we have to be able to provide the educational services for our students. And so, to ask the question, do you want to return now, is kind of a setup question for the teachers, given the decision that we have to make is, how do we staff classrooms based on what the board decides in this hybrid environment while we're operating in the yellow? I didn't think that was fair to ask the teachers that question, which is why I gave the other more open-ended questions about what are the issues and concerns that they have? And a lot of those things did surface in terms of personal protective equipment and what are the mitigation strategies? So, our commitment, and I just, I'll share, just by way of example, I called back to Michigan this morning, my former district, the first I was a superintendent and has been in in-person instruction for, since the end of August. And I asked the superintendent how it's going, but 80% of their kids have returned. Now, it's a small school district. 80% have returned. The superintendent said, surprisingly, to him at least, the kids are very compliant with wearing masks, they're compliant with following the arrows and the signs in, in the school. He said the teachers were really nervous to start with, they had after-hours cleaning, and that was a concern. He moved that up during the day so teachers could see the cleaning being done, and he said their stress level has gone down pretty significantly. He said, right now, the challenge is with the parents still. But the students and the staff seem to be humming along fine, they've had no cases of COVID. They learn something new every day about how this is rolling out. And I think that's, for me, the reason why I made the call, is to say, what can we learn from what others who have already started in this process have learned? And, and what I heard in much of the survey response from our teachers, is that they need to know that we're actually prioritizing their health, safety, and well-being, that we're following the metrics, that we haven't just said, you know, we're going to proceed and, and ignore what the public health officials have said. And so that's, that's part of the strategy. But I, I didn't think it was fair to ask the question, yes or no, when in fact, if the board decides that we're going to proceed with this, it's really not a yes or no question.
So, I, I guess I would ask or follow up with that. When we surveyed, and, and when we surveyed parents and staff back in July, that was on the basis of, we would reopen at some point, the governor had not yet set, or I think had just set the 15th, or some date, I can't even remember now, it's so long. But that, there were still talks about potential changes, and we had asked those questions on the basis of, save, return in-person when safe to do so. That was always the caveat, if I'm not mistaken. Since then, the state government implemented these metrics. So we would be returning, and I guess, let me segue here, those metrics are, are national standards, right? I mean, it's, if I'm not mistaken, the under, the 10 cases under 100,000.
Correct.
Right, is a national standard. That isn't something Arizona just invented out of the sky. So, if, if we're, if we're saying we're prioritizing, we're prioritizing our student health and safety, and we're prioritizing our staff health and safety, and if the, I'm just putting this out here, there, again, just so that our families and our staff are very well aware of where this could land, and we are too, if we do have instances where we- If we do have instances where we're in the yellow still, but because of staffing and the demand, we do have full classrooms, that would not technically be within the gist of the hybrid model. Is that correct or incorrect? I mean, if...
So, so it is consistent with hybrid. It's not consistent with all of the criteria that were identified in the plan in terms of six feet of physical distance. And in talking with Dr. Sun and Shine, there are degrees of risk. And so, for example, all of the public health officials will insist that, that wearing a mask is absolutely essential to reducing the spread of COVID. And, and so six feet is, is optimal. Three feet with a mask is better than one foot with a mask. And, and then, you know, so it's about that, that risk management component. Class sizes differ. There are some places where you really can't put that many kids into a classroom. We're going to have to look into the logistics and building. And that's why leaning on our principals to identify how to utilize their classroom space and how to, you know, roll this out once we get firm numbers is something that we need to look at. I think that it's fair to say that if you assume you're going to have half the number of kids in a class, that's probably not a fair assumption. You're going to probably have more than 50% of the number of kids just by virtue of the way it shakes out between the three models that we have operating at the present time. But I, I also think that it's not fair to say that that wouldn't be consistent with the hybrid. It's, it stretches how much of physical distancing we can do in a classroom. The flip side, we have the cohorting, in the elementary in particular, that is really important in terms of contact tracing, identification, isolation when you, when you have an issue. So all of those things also become part of, of the metric here.
Right. But what, right, and so at the elementary levels, the cohorting model can work. But by fall break, I mean, some, it is possible that some of these campuses will be largely operating as, you know, 70% filled. I mean, that's, that's possible. We still have to ask that question now for the commitment. But it is possible that these could be largely filled. I mean, I just want to be clear on that, that, that is, and we might not be in the metrics for that. I mean, it, it is, I agree, it is within the definition of hybrid for part online and part, but the proportions could be a bit more out of whack, for lack of a better term. So I just want to put that out there.
Point.
Thank you. Vice President Beckman is next.
I think it will be helpful stemming from that point, that we have a natural kind of discussion now about the PPE and the precautions that we're going to take. Because if this model does get implemented, you know, all of the families that want to be back by coming from fall break will be back. And I guess I've watched a couple of other districts' board meetings and have been, I know this is a very similar model to Chandler's model that they are doing, they're implementing. And I watched Gilbert's as well. And I was, it was interesting to see, they presented some of their, what they're doing is, you know, for instance, at the high school level, they're really, and the middle school level, the bell schedule is going to be completely different, the arrows in the hallway, the temporary wash, hand washing stations. Can you speak to kind of the safety precautions we're going to be taking for our students and for our, our teachers? I think it's really going to be beneficial for our families and for our staff and teachers to kind of know what precautions we are ready to implement for them.
So I'd like to say two things. One, we plan a more formal presentation on all of those things at our meeting on the 15th. But Dennis, are you online?
Yes, sir, I am.
All right. So you heard the question?
I heard the question.
If you could provide a response, that would be much appreciated. Thank you, sir.
Okay. So most recently, I just sent an email like 10 minutes ago to the principals, the school secretaries about signage and the striping in the sidewalks and the arrows and all of that. So they just recently, and literally in the last 10 minutes, got an email about signage and how that's all going to lay out. We have sanitizers, over 500 sanitizing stations that we have some that are going to be mounted to the walls, others that are going to be on stands in middle hallways and different areas and the traffic patterns throughout the schools. And then we have on top of that, 32 hand wash stations that are being installed over the next couple of weeks. We expect that they'll be all done by the time everybody gets back. Oh, what's happening to the screen?
Ooh.
Wow, you're going away to this.
School. So, and then there was a discussion today amongst Shannon Crozier, Eva Dino, myself, and EB Hugigot on the distribution of cleaning supplies for the classrooms, for the front offices, PPE for the nurses and the teachers and all of that. So all of the information, I think, is hitting the streets today and tomorrow. Distribution of all that stuff has been happening this week. So I think that probably by the end of the day tomorrow, everyone's going to have a little bit better level of comfort as to the stuff that's going to be on their campuses.
Thank you, Dennis. I appreciate that. And I would add that, as we've talked about, the importance of screening and making sure that if you are sick or exhibiting any symptoms, that you stay at home, whether it's a student or a family member or a teacher. We have magnets that remind people of what the symptoms are, put on a refrigerator so you have a way to remember every day. Because what we need is for people to be extra cautious, to look out for the health, safety, and well-being of everyone in our learning community so that we can remain open. So we're, we've got a lot of different things in, in the works. We have a lot of material that's available. And we'll continue to pursue all the things that we can to make sure that we've properly equipped our classrooms and our teachers for a return of our students.
So we, I'm going to go in order of people raised their hands. Sandy Grabich, you raised your hand. And you got it answered. Then Barbara Pearlberg is next.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you for all this hard work this past week, especially, it must be a blur really at this point. So appreciate it. Definitely appreciate a light at the end of the tunnel. And, you know, it, it's been clear, the division is clear, but also the passion on both sides is clear. And for myself and the community that I, that I hear that absolutely need to be back in-person with their teacher, it's just something we can't ignore any longer. No, that's not for everyone. And we've recognized that. And I am incredibly grateful that we have the staff willing to make the sacrifices and overcome the challenges that it will be to, to staff these two needs, online, in-person. We cannot discredit, we can't dismiss that in any way. That is a huge hurdle. That is stressful to our teachers, it's stressful to our families. And it cannot be ignored tonight, that that will be a reality. That's, that's a con that we are going to face to come tomorrow morning. I, I know I kind of asked this last week, not pretty well, not actually very well, though. You know, we, we do recognize this is, this is a crisis. We're all in. Companies have faced, faced it. And we're looking at possibly, I mean, to hear today, which I think a lot of our community members recognized, is that we won't be in the green, green. Who knows when? So that's concerned me. I, I'm going to say right now, I do question the, the metrics to a point when, when you're told this will never get to this green until, you know, I think we have to reassess those metrics. Do I want to do that as a board necessarily? No. But I think our community definitely needs to take a look at, as we move forward, what's in the comfort zone, what's, what's our risk and where we are. I'm going to ask tonight, especially considering what has come up about the idea of, you know, whether or not 70% return in class is possible. I, I would like to address tonight the three feet versus six feet question, if we need to as a board to move forward. Because it's very true, we need to be honest about tonight. So tomorrow morning, when our parents start figuring out what they need to choose, they have an honest picture of what that will look like. And, but I'm kind of getting ahead of myself. That was my second point. My first point is for our teachers, we are in a crisis. Is there a way that we can assure at least placeholders for the positions that some of our teachers have held for years, that if they end up reassigned for this year, next August, when we go back to reshuffle the deck, can we have the placeholders? Can we, can we honor that place after all this? Is that a possibility?
Well, that's, that's been our plan. It's really hard to predict how everything will fall out within the next nine months. But our plan is to be able to do that. We recognize that these are extraordinary times and we've had to move people around. We'd like to be able to have a settling that makes sense and puts people back where they were, if we're able to do that.
Very appreciative of that. And I said again, I'm very grateful for, for the sacrifices our staff will be making. So to go back to, well, before I go on, SOLE and EDL. I think, one, we all want to paint a very honest picture of when you're choosing EDL, there's, it's not possibly going to look exactly like it looks right now. Obviously, might have a different teacher. But is there any thought about combining SOLE and EDL into kind of just a more comprehensive online version, you know, section? So that we really, instead of SOLE, EDL, and in-person, we just, we're down to two. Is that a possibility at all?
So I'm going to ask Dr. Garen to come to the microphone, but I'll, I'll say that that's a challenge because of how Scottsdale Online runs with Florida Virtual Curriculum.
So we can't just incorporate those things?
It, it becomes very difficult, but it doesn't mean that we couldn't do some combination in some limited circumstance. At least, that's what I've heard in some of our other conversations.
Yes. So we have looked at every possible option. And I have learned more about Scottsdale Online than I ever would have thought. I mean, really, we've all stretched and Dr. Sakos has really taken me through so much of it. And it, especially at the secondary level, it, it just doesn't match up with what the students are doing right now in the EDL model. And the reason Scottsdale Online was not for everyone is families wanted to remain connected to their neighborhood school and their signature program. And though Scottsdale Online is outstanding and it is working so well for many families, it does not have that neighborhood school signature program feature to it. And so to switch midstream would not be educationally, that could be problematic, particularly for credit-bearing classes. And, and in addition, it's, it would just, we're already staffed in Scottsdale Online, so it would be additional movements of teachers and we would have to reschedule. So it's just, it's, it would be pretty disruptive.
Yeah. And to be clear, I wasn't suggesting that all EDL students go into SOLE. That, it was really honestly the thought of more the opposite flow possibly, that, you know. Because we've all heard the middle school, high school limitations, their, their classes just aren't available, so.
Can I just add one thing? Just because I do have a unique perspective, because I have a one daughter in EDL and I have one daughter in SOLE, and they're in the same grade and pretty much the same classes, they are not in the same place right now. It would be pretty hard to kind of put them together right now and assess where one is in their chemistry class versus the other one. And, I mean, it could be done, but it would be challenging. It really would. Because they're not, they're similar, but they're not, they don't line up.
And, and we ask for the semester commitment. So, so that what I would suggest is that as we think about the second semester, and that we do have to be anticipating that, we still need to figure out what our next steps are here. But that's part of the, the calculus is to figure, okay, what did we learn in our Scottsdale Online, EDL, and return? What can we improve for the second semester? And I think that's work that'll be done after we figure out this next step.
Where we are, sure. Okay. I appreciate that very much. So back to that, that kind of honest picture of what we're trying to paint. So the idea of staffing is, is our biggest hurdle in this. We knew that. Also, what our classrooms will look like. I, again, three feet versus six feet, we discussed last week that this might be a roadblock to our in-person learning. And moving forward, I think no one wants situation where just because we as a board didn't have a conversation and someone says, you know, I went in-person with this expectation and here's my cell phone photos of children less than six feet apart. And just, you know, the idea of having to deal with all of that and that turmoil, that's not what we're trying to accomplish here tonight. We're trying to get people, like you said, and you said it very well, where they need to be to, to learn. And so just want to make sure that we haven't set up roadblocks that when that in-person hits and our parents are actually living what it looks like now, which it'll look different, it just doesn't implode. I would also say, you know, I think even our elementary school students and parents have to realize that their classroom will look different. The, the teacher won't be able to have the same physical interaction with the students. It's, I mean, I would hope all our in-person families completely understand how different our campuses will look. And then I also hope our families can choose if, if it, any thought of that makes it uncomfortable, they should pick online, or, yeah, online. I, you know, I guess that's our biggest challenge right now, is to make sure that we, we paint clear pictures for our communities, because it will be a very tough choice no matter what.
And we are prepared to do that tonight, to be very transparent with this supplemental criteria that is beyond the metrics that we approved, but that is really the safety protocols that we're talking about, the mask-wearing, the communal gatherings, the six feet. So there is a list of 10 of those and we're prepared to do that. But I want to, before we do that, because we will do it, do you have a question that will add to it so that we can then just...
Yes.
...the discussion? So Board Member Greenberg.
If I may ask, the opposite question of, to what I've been pointing out. Again, I'm assuming that people answered the first question honestly, so that the numbers won't be dramatically different or significantly different, apologies. But what about grades where the desire to return to learn at a site is 25%, 30%? Are we going to staff that? Or are we going to recommend that the student move to another campus, another site? I mean, is there any, any, I mean, again, nothing's set in stone here because we don't directly know and we don't have the specific numbers. And it could be that it pans out 50/50 right down the line. But if that's not the case, based on these preliminary numbers, what might happen?
So, so at this point, we have not, at least to my knowledge, discussed moving any students from their campus to a different location. We have talked about the potential that a teacher who is teaching enhanced distance learning extended might have students from more than one campus in order to balance the, the load. And so it's really imperative to get the, the data in those situations where you have smaller class sizes to figure out how you stand up the in-person. And so I would, I would hope that as we proceed, the understanding is that for those who want and need in-person, we're going to be able to provide that. How that structured might look a little bit different from building to building based on how the numbers look.
Does that answer your question?
Right. So it's not, it, it does, it, so it's, it's not that parents or staff should expect the exact same uniform. We understand the changing of teachers and the staffing, but, and, you know, class sizes might vary, but it might even be that the delivery is different.
Right.
For in-person.
It's possible, that would be.
It's possible, it is a possibility based on what happens.
And I'll just add, that was always the case. I happened to have been when my kids were at Scottsdale and they were in elementary school. We were at a school that their numbers were less and my kids had classes of 19. And if you were up north at Cheyenne, your classes were much greater. So that's always been the case.
Well, I, I understand, but we, I mean, we did talk, I mean, we talked about the hybrid method and not meeting that because it didn't have enough... the hybrid method and not meeting that because it didn't have enough traction. So I wanted to make sure that if somebody says, I want to go to this, I want to be in in-person, and we only end up having 10 kids, that we will be finding a way to staff that and not telling them.
Right.
You're out, sorry. There isn't enough. So that's that's what I wanted to specifically make clear.
Right. And I think you answered that. The answer is yes. Board Member Kravitz.
I thought I recall either reading or saying that we had staffed November 30th this year. My, I thought I had seen that.
We have more teaching staff in order to accommodate the ratios between EDL full return and Scottsdale Online. We ended up hiring more teachers than we would have had if we were just in-person.
Okay, so we we may not have as big an issue.
Right. It's really about accommodating the two models that resulted in that.
So do we have any other questions before we answer Board Member Pearlberg's question? And have that discussion? So we're prepared to to talk about that criteria?
Sure. So in the in the Arizona Department of Health Services safely return to in-person instruction, we've got the metrics. And then after the metrics, there is a a section in the in the plan that talks about other other criteria to consider. I I like to look at page 17 of the plan. It talks about a new school day. And and one of the things that it says, the reason I I pull it up is because there's a spot on the class that says spaced desks apart, six feet where feasible. You may recall that when Mr. Rayler was presenting the original safety plan, that where feasible piece was underlined many times. And so that was that was always contemplated by us as as a challenge. And we did reference the American Academy for Pediatrics and the and the three feet as as maybe a an acceptable alternative. And in my conversation with Dr. Sunnenschein, this becomes a part where the governing board is not making a public health decision in terms of the metrics. It's making a a decision about the the risk reward related to the importance of getting kids back to school and how you can do that in your school building environment, which is different from the metrics that they've set out. So on page five of the guidelines, you know, we have this this checklist that you're familiar with seeing. And in the hybrid, it checks hand and hygiene and respiratory etiquette. That's checked for both full return and and hybrid. Enhanced cleaning, proper ventilation, and you recall that we've upgraded the air filtration system from MERV eight to MERV 13 in our facilities to address the ventilation questions. I actually discovered something very interesting today in Arizona. It was pleasant. I'm like, wow, this, I could get used to this.
70 degrees can be nice.
And and there's there's a rumor that as we get into mid-October and later, that there'll be more opportunities for doing things outside. So when we think about how we have lunch and even some classroom opportunities, we have the ability to do some of the things that they recommend in terms of the benefit of being outdoors. Monitoring absenteeism, symptom screening, physical distancing, it has parenthetically six feet. But again, that's a recommendation, not a requirement. Cloth face coverings, cohorting, field trips and large gatherings canceled, and communal spaces closed. Those are all checked under hybrid. But there is a lot of those, those are suggestions, not requirements, and they're part of what was contemplated when you're implementing a hybrid, but not something that the board has said we have to follow rigidly. And so it will be important to clarify the expectations of the board. To me, the metrics are clear. It's what those benchmarks were to be red, yellow, or green. And then from there, I think there's some flexibility, but the board needs to either affirm or correct my understanding, there's some flexibility. I I frame it in terms of substantial compliance, that depending on the day, the building, the situation, I mean, even with our EDL camps where we have 10 or 12 kids and and a lot of adults, that doesn't mean we're able to maintain six feet of physical distancing because kids gravitate to each other. So we will do the best we can to comply, but these aren't the, these aren't the benchmark metrics. These are mitigation strategies that we work to implement in order to reduce the risk of possible spread of COVID in our schools when we return to learn in-person. Does that clarify kind of where we are and and maybe what, when the board makes a decision, the parameters with which we as the administration have to work with?
Can I add a couple? I think that there's two items which have been confirmed are probably the most too important, and that is the mask-wearing.
Yep.
And the hand sanitizing. And those are the two areas that we will not be making exceptions. You have to wear your mask unless there is the accommodation for health reasons. But and those will be enforced, as well as the constant hand sanitizing and hand washing throughout the day. And probably what we will be is hopefully, as parents, you're telling yourself and yourself, because we recognize it's not touching your face, and we all as humans have a habit to do that. So to try to stop, to break that habit for all of us, not just just the students. But those are the things that are the most important. So I just wanted to add that. And that would be my expectation as a as a board member. Board Member Greenberg.
And just to clarify, I'm I'm very, I'm happy with that. We can only do everything we can. My my comment about the hybrid is that solely that, not that we would be having to meet every single one of those metrics, including the six feet, but just that the purpose of hybrid is ultimately to limit the number of interactions between students and adults and adults with each other, which is perhaps the main issue with office buildings, bars, restaurants, schools, is the adult interaction. So that was my my comment on the hybrid is not that we won't be meeting six feet, social distancing. Dennis Rayler, this team has done everything they can to make it as spacious as possible, but there's only so much we can do. It's that it's possible that 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 the limiting of interactions is not what necessarily one might envision. That's that was my only comment on that.
Well, and can I add that that's part of the reason why we say no visitors, that if you're coming to campus, it's by appointment only? Again, to reduce, I mean, I understand how people like to have drop-by lunches in this environment. We just can't do that because it exposes additional elements of risk that we can't control. And so that's, that is part of the mitigation strategy, is to to do as best we can to to keep it limited to the people we know are adhering to the expectations for symptom screening and and following the protocols that have been established.
And and that would include field trips as well, right, Dr. Menzel?
Yeah.
So that I would like to be transparent, the parents aren't expecting that if they're coming back to school, that it's going to be normal and expect field trips so that somebody who chose EDL online would be missing out on that field trip. They will not this semester. That's my understanding.
Yes, mine, too.
Yeah. He had, Board Member Greenberg had a follow-up.
One, one question here. In moving this, in moving the yellow and going forward with this, I really appreciate that it's phased up and it takes time so that we can gauge and plan and prepare, given where the numbers might lie for all of this. My only, one question would be, and some parents have asked in our emails, is there a situation, so that you may explain it, a situation, because you brought it up, where we would be closing again? Is there is there any reason why parents would should be concerned or worried about that?
So there could be multiple scenarios. And in, this is done in conjunction with Maricopa County Department of Public Health. If we had an outbreak and there were multiple cases, you know, that that got to the point where there was concern by the Department of Public Health, they could recommend that we close a building, they could recommend that we just quarantine a classroom. They they are very reluctant to close a district. However, using the benchmarks that have been established, the recommendation is that if one or more of those three benchmark metrics goes red for two consecutive weeks, that the district move back to all online, because it would signify that there's substantial community spread. So the benchmark metrics remain in play unless the board changes them. And so that would be the private, the most likely case is that if if we end up with a big spike, like we saw back in July, that could move the metrics to red. And if they stay there for two weeks, then the recommendation is to consider going to all virtual again. In the case of individual COVID cases, mostly it's isolate, contain, and then continue with providing education to the other students. So it's less likely that you'll be closing down full buildings. Not impossible, because the the numbers could get you to that point. But following the benchmark metrics would be the other area where we might have to reverse course. Again, we hope not to. We hope that the community follows public health recommendations so we get through this without having to close.
Good, all right. Thank you very much.
Vice President Beckman.
So a couple of questions, and now you just brought up another one. Thank you. So we're moving forward just like, both directions the same way, with through these metrics. So it's safe to say that even if our metrics move in a negative fashion, and it's determined that it's fairly isolated to one learning community zip code or whatever, it would still be looked at as the whole, just like we are when we're moving through them in a positive way, correct? So if when we we went the reverse and say we went back to red and we looked at our zip codes, but it was really in two zip codes, for instance, or three where we were red, we're still going to treat it the same way we were treating it going positive, then we would close our whole district?
Well, that's a, I, a question I think that needs to be determined. So what I have said to other people is that while we open as a unified district, depending on what the data says, because if you have it in a particular building that you need to close for a period of time, why would you, if you don't need to close every building, I I wouldn't see why you would need to do that. If in the aggregate, our 15 zip codes have moved to red for two consecutive weeks, that would signal to me that then the district should be all back on virtual. But if we're in the aggregate, not there, but we are at at a level of concern in a particular building, then I think we should look at what's the best strategy to ensure health, safety, and well-being of the students and staff in that particular building in consultation with the public health officials? Because I I would be reluctant to make the call on my own, absent the guidance of the public health officials.
Okay. Thank you for that. The question that I had earlier is just kind of a summary question, because I want our viewers, and I want to make sure I understand. So you are saying that right now, we are following the metrics themselves, because the way our survey shows us, the data is coming through, we will not have full number of students in our schools. So that would meet the definition of a hybrid as we interpret it, because it's partial, not full. However, we are, will not be able to follow all of the guidelines in a, that is, that are recommended, which is the six feet, et cetera. So we are following the metrics, but just not particularly the guidelines. Okay.
Yes.
And, can I, I wanted to follow up with Board Member Pearlberg. I wanted to make sure that your question was answered, or if you had any other specifics that you, you wanted Dr. Menzel to pass.
I'd like to reserve the right for for further questions, but yes, I think at this point, it, the picture's a little clearer.
All right. Board Member Greenberg.
To to follow up on both of those, I think the aggregate weighted zip codes is an intelligent approach, and it's the right approach, and it makes a lot of sense. So I appreciate that your team came up with that. And I do think it is important, if if, and I I don't think it's going to happen, but it it could, if closing down again does become an issue we need to discuss, that we do stick to the AZDHS and county health officials, because we didn't do that in March, and I was not happy with that, and it's caused a lot of problems. So I I would personally say it's very important that we we follow somebody, and if we're going to follow somebody, we should follow those experts. And I think we're all in agreement on that. I don't think, or maybe not. And then on the second point, for the hybrid, that, I guess that does raise one question. If we do ask for parents to choose in-person or EDL, and the numbers do not line up to what we expect of more of a 50/50, you know, 40 to 60, that type of range, which a lot of them fall into already, so I I think it should be fine. If it is, I mean, if it goes even higher, I mean, if you have almost 90, 80, 90%, is that still a hybrid then?
Would be a hybrid under the definitions of the Arizona Department of Health Services, because you still have some students that are in an online environment. When I talked to Dr. Sunnenschein, she said it really was that expansive, that you could you could get a 90/10 split and still be compliant. What would be important, and I think it's the point that all of you are making, is that in a building, if we have more than 50% of the students there, we have 75% in one, for example, principal needs to communicate with the families who are returning, that we have a larger percent of students than 50%. And here are the mitigation strategies that we put in place to ensure the health, safety, and well-being of our staff and students, so that we're being very clear about our communication and how we're going to proceed, given the numbers that we have. And so I think that's very important, and we'll be building specific based on what the numbers look like after we get the commitment.
Okay. Thank you.
So in, can I follow up? So that brings up a point. If in a particular school, you did have, let's say, the 85%, you could go back to those parents and say, are you still comfortable, knowing it's 85? And they could have the choice to be going back to EDL online instead, and those numbers could come down, just because, I mean, if they register and it's in that 50/60 range or even the 40% range, it's staying put in what you said did. But if it raises above that, then possibly, or are you not saying that?
So it's yet another reason why the phased-in approach is really important. We're going to learn a lot when we start with K2. We we know from our conversations with parents, there are going to be some that will still choose enhanced distance learning, but for kindergartners, you know, being in-person is is really important. And and as we then solicit the commitment from others, I think that that is going to, we're going to be able to make some tweaks there. The timing is what's going to be critical, because once we make the the staffing adjustments, and our staff have asked for that additional time in order to be able to prepare for whatever shifts in students they're going to be serving, that's where, you know, it's a very small window. But I would like to defer to our team that will be working on the logistics, because I, I can't really tell how that's going to play out, and I don't want to overcommit.
Okay. Just want to be transparent.
Yep.
Vice President Beckman.
One last thing on that, the follow-up of the zip code thing. The reason that I brought it up is because I had been asked questions from community members about opening individual schools initially, if that area was green, but the whole thing is flawed, both directions, because we have open enrollment. And I used the Coronado community and the Saguaro community as an example, that if you had, you know, high positive numbers in the Coronado community, you have so many kids that open enroll in Saguaro, so how would you treat that? And so I just wanted to have that conversation, that in both directions, you have to use that aggregate because of open enrollment.
Exactly.
Any other questions? Okay. If there are no other questions, and if Dr. Menzel, do you have any other comments? Or Dr. Guerin, before we move on out of our discussion information item?
I just want to thank you for the thoughtful questions and and really being open to a modified recommendation, one that, you know, hadn't been really put forward before because of the lack of data that we now have. So thank you for the opportunity to present something that I think gets us as close as we could possibly get in this pandemic to meeting the needs of our our kids and families.
And I'm back to governing board. I'd like to thank you, Dr. Menzel, Dr. Guerin, Dr. Sakos, and Dr. Haugigat for presenting today and being here, and for all the work that you're doing to put this, to put this together. We'll move on to action item A, is consider possible modifications of the board's August 18, 2020 decision to approve the Arizona Department of Health metrics. This was brought up by Board Member Pearlberg, so I will let you start out the discussion, if you would like, to talk about how you, the reason you asked for it to be put on the agenda.
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry. I was following. Well, obviously, going back to our meeting last week, I asked for this. I I felt, at least I was hearing that night, that we may have a roadblock to getting especially our youngest students back in-person that need to be in-person. And so I just felt that night would be irresponsible to not ask for us to at least discuss any roadblocks, that that one. roadblocks, that, that one, or any others that might hinder a successful return to in-person model for our students who need it. We heard loud and clear, we have those need. And I really appreciate your comments earlier as far as our community has to accept, you're not going to get what you want, but hopefully your student's going to get what you need, get what they need to learn. And that's, that's our most important goal. Our classrooms are going to look different, it's going to feel different, our teachers' interactions with our students are going to be different, and there's going to be a lot of frustration, but obviously, we're relying on our community, especially now that we have gratefully heard from them and surveyed with them. We're relying on our community to make this plane fly as we send it up into the air while we're still building it, really. I'm going to use an old analogy in SUSD, you have a plane up in the air, you're building it while you're flying it. And that's exactly what we will be doing these next few months. And I am incredibly grateful to our community, our staff, teachers who, as we move forward, are going to be positive and productive in making this plane fly because we've never done it before. And that's certainly not recognized, or not, not recognized by any of us here. So just incredibly grateful, so thank you.
Any other discussion? I know there are a couple of other board members might have wanted to bring this up also.
Well, and I would just add, if there is any other roadblocks, if I'm clear on that, that we do need to discuss. I appreciate your distinguishing that these are the recommendations, these are the guidelines we're following, it's nothing that we've approved. It is ideal, and we recognize it won't always be ideal.
Anybody else? If there's no other comment, then I will, it doesn't appear that we will have an action item, but I will bring it up if anybody would like to make a motion, to request a motion, they may, may do so at this time. All right, then we will move on to action item B. Do I need my glasses to read it? Action item B is authorize the superintendent to implement next steps related to returning to in-person learning. The background is that the governing board will consider and may vote to approve one or more options for the remainder of the semester. This discussion may include safety protocols and ADHS criteria relevant to implementing a plan. The options may include one or more of the following. One, enhanced distance learning, EDL. The board may vote to authorize the superintendent to continue providing the EDL model for those families who choose it. Hybrid, the board may vote to authorize the superintendent to implement a hybrid model, which may include a phased in of students. Or three, phased in full person return, the board may vote to authorize the superintendent to implement a phased in full return in-person model for those families who chose it. This aligns with our information discussion item that we just had. So Dr. Menzel, I'll let you start off in this discussion.
So given that conversation, the way that I would recommend a motion be adopted would be to authorize the superintendent to implement next steps related to returning to in-person learning, utilizing enhanced distance learning and phased in full in-person return as presented.
For discussion, Board Member Greenberg.
May I clear, I'm sorry, do you mean C or B?
A and, A and C. So, so B represents the nine-one hybrid. C was the phased in full return, that was the op, so A, B, and C reference the choices that parents made.
Well, B doesn't, I don't understand, wait, now, now I'm a little confused because is this not the new, isn't this?
The new.
The new hybrid model. It doesn't specify which one, this is based on your recommendations tonight. I don't want to, I don't want to vote on full in-person return to learn phase up because that isn't technically what we're doing.
Right. I was under the impression that we, I'll say, what I was thinking is that we would be authorizing you to provide EDL model for those families who choose it because that is one of the, and that we would be moving to a hybrid model, which is the phase in of students.
Right.
And how it is, is it's, it's not full return because not 100% of the students would be coming back. But it does, it does clarify for those families who choose it.
It says for those families who choose it.
Well, I guess maybe that needs to be added for the hybrid, for those families who choose it.
So I wonder if.
I don't mean to be pedantic, I just, I don't want it to come out that we voted for one thing and then we did.
We danced around the hybrid language and wanted to, to eliminate that just because it becomes confusing of, was it hybrid that was recommended or not? But we had the recommendations in the presentation. They were to implement a phased in return to learn in person using the following schedule based on the data, natural hybrid results from those choosing to remain in EDL and those desiring to return in person. And then three, it reaffirms the commitment to follow the ADH benchmark metrics while acknowledging challenges with meeting all of the recommendations during hybrid implementation. So that, the clearest statement of, of what I would be authorized to do would be to adopt the recommendations that were in the PowerPoint presentation, which is a combination of.
As long as we all have that understanding, I don't mind it, it's just.
I still think we need to define what it is because that's what's going to end up being in the minutes, this will not be in the minutes. If, just out of curiosity, because I, I think I'm in agreement with you, if C, if it's one and C, and, well, I have it down as one and three, actually, but if it's the board may, would be to authorize the EDL model for those families who choose it, and then it's really C may vote to authorize the superintendent to implement, and I would add the word hybrid, phased in full return in-person model for those families who choose it. Is that making sense? Because it's full return in person.
Is that acceptable?
I, I just don't want our community to, they have hybrid in their minds of what was presented to them this past weekend.
That's why I'm adding the word hybrid. It is hybrid because we're in the yellow and that's how we're.
Can we not put language where it's resulting in a hybrid, meaning something like phased in full, full return person resulting in a hybrid in connection with EDL?
Who choose it?
Because I don't want either, I don't want our.
If they hear the word hybrid.
I don't want them to think that we voted on a hybrid necessarily tonight, although it results in a hybrid, but I also don't want them to think and get the misunderstanding that it's just complete full return because it is a phased in.
It's not, no, right, no.
Model with, but it results in a hybrid when you combine it with our A, which is the EDL.
That's how I'm understanding. Whether it's resulting or it is a hybrid.
As Dr. Menzel pointed out, we had a lengthy discussion over the word hybrid and whether that would be confusing to our stakeholders after a whole presentation on September 1 of something called hybrid that is not what you're approving tonight. So from my perspective, I think it would be better if you didn't include the word hybrid, or if you referenced your A and C on your agenda to be clear what it is you're approving. Board Member Beckman did articulate it. I wasn't up here with a pen to write it down. If you wanted to try that again, your explanation of that was clear, but I'm, I'm concerned that if you say you're approving hybrid, it will be confusing.
My concern is, again, to repeat what everyone has said, on both sides, I don't want our community to hear the word hybrid and think that we implemented a specific hybrid model because it's the one, and it was their last choice. And I also don't want others to feel that we voted on full return, period, and that's just being phased in. So I want to, to define what we actually discussed tonight, that we are having a full, a phased in full in-person return that results in a hybrid in combination with EDL. Does that make sense?
Somebody say so moved. Just kidding. And I, but I want to go around the board to understand because I think we have to trust that, we are going to have to trust our families, that they'll have to educate themselves that there is a difference between last week's hybrid and the one that we're putting in place tonight. But I think it's not fair to not use the word hybrid in that model, given that we are in the yellow and that it is going to be resulting in a hybrid. And that's how we can even implement it because we are in that hybrid stage. So that's my view, but Board Member Greenberg.
Yeah, I really hate to be pedantic, but I, I, and usually, it's not the type of issue I would bring up, but I, I was just surprised because frankly, I think I'm very clear either way. If we vote on the hybrid model, I know that we're talking about what has been presented tonight. If we vote for phased in full person, I know that is what we're talking about tonight. I can already see the emails coming in either way, so. But we can't really change a whole lot here, so, and we're not going to, we're not going to not vote. So.
We can change any action item because it's the motion we make. So just because it's written here does not mean that that has to be the motion that we actually.
Right, I mean.
We can add and amend.
It could be helpful to reference your notice, A and C on your notice, and add that A and C together result in, which a few of you have phrased it that way.
Yeah.
Result in a hybrid in compliance with the ADHS.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
And I would just add that that's what parents will be asked in the survey that Dr. Hagegat and, and the team have prepared to send to K-2 families is remain in EDL or return five days a week in a traditional schedule essentially. The combination of the two results in the hybrid. And, and so I do think that that clarifying language is important because we're not asking them, when we survey them, do you want the hybrid? We're asking them, are you going to remain in EDL or are you going to come back? And it's the combination of the two that result in a hybrid.
Does that help?
I think so. Well, you'll tell us if it doesn't. Us, I would like to hear from the other two board members to see their feelings.
In terms of the wording? Fine with me.
Board Member Pearlberg.
I just don't want confusion on what hybrid we are approving. I think referencing A, B, A and C and, and saying, with those two, with those two voices for our community, it results in a.
In compliance with ADHS.
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Okay, so do I need to restate it?
No.
Or do you think we're safe on that? That we understand that the motion is that we would be, and I'm going to make sure that I, authorizing the superintendent to implement the next steps relating to returning to in-person learning as defined by, now, I have down one and three, but you've been saying A and C, so.
That's what's in the background.
Is that in the background? Okay. A and C resulting in a hybrid in compliance with ADHS.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a second.
Second.
Okay, the vice, Board Member Greenberg moves and Vice President Beckman seconds. We will take a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much, and again, thank you to the staff and to Dr. Menzel and to Ms. So that concludes our meeting, so we can adjourn. Do I have, I move that we adjourn our special meeting? Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Craftet seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. The special meeting of the governing board on September 9, 2020 is adjourned at 6:57 PM. And I want to thank all the board members. Thank you.
Thank you.